Okay. Good afternoon, welcome to the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from the meeting we had on September 7th. Move it. Any questions?
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments, changes? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Chair. Second item of business is consideration of the fiscal year 2012, 2013 operating budget for the university, or the request at least. And I think, Matt, will you be going through the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, yes. Thanks Chair Loda. In front of all of you is a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through. As part of your electronic documents, the actual budget request is included in there that provides much more detail than I'm going to go through. But for this meeting, we'll go through the budget request PowerPoint presentation. So, let's start on slide two. And again, just as we've been in for the last several years, the state and city are both facing challenging fiscal years for fiscal year 13. The state's budget deficit for next year is projected to be $2.4 billion. And the state, through the actions it took in the enacted budget last spring, significantly brought down their deficit for fiscal 13. It was well above $10 million last year, and so now it's 2.4. So, still a challenge, but not nearly as big as the number they had last year. The city has a much bigger projected deficit at this point of $4.6 billion. I'm sure most of you have read that the mayor recently asked all city agencies for additional rounds of reductions to try to close that gap for next year. So, again, the state and city are both looking at, you know, having to close significant gaps for next year. And I'm sure, again, most of you know the history here at CUNY over the last four fiscal years since fiscal year 2009. We have sustained significant reductions. At our senior colleges, we had a $95.1 million reduction in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 12, which brought our four-year total up to $300 million. And our community colleges haven't been spared either from the reductions. The community college base aid that we receive from the state, the rate has been reduced by 20% over the last four fiscal years. And while that's happened, our enrollment at the community colleges has gone up by 26%. So, we have had challenges at both our senior colleges and our community colleges, and our campus presidents have had to make really difficult decisions over the last few years in how to manage their budgets. At the senior colleges for fiscal year 2011, the year that we just closed, overall spending actually went down year to year from fiscal year 10 to fiscal year 11. And at the community colleges, spending was just about flat from fiscal 10 to 11. And that includes all of the mandatory cost increases, contractual increases, and things like that. So, our campuses have done a good job in trying to manage with reduced resources. And so, we are presenting our budget requests, and included in there is a tuition increase for $300 at both the senior colleges and the community colleges for, effective for fall 2012 semester. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we get into the presentation. Okay, so on page three, for the, this is our seventh year that we are using the CUNY compact as our financing vehicle for the budget request. And again, I know that you're all familiar with the compact. The main theme of the compact is shared responsibilities amongst all of the partners of the university and creating opportunity to leverage those funds. The compact, we are asking for the state and city to fund all of our mandatory needs and a portion of our investment plan. The other, the remaining portion of the investment plan will be covered through self-financing components, mainly private fundraising, restructuring and efficiencies within our own internal budget, revenues from enrollment growth, and the revenue from the proposed tuition increase. Now, slide four talks a little bit more about the compact. And I want to point out again, on the tuition increase, the $300 increase would be a 5.8% increase over current rates at the senior colleges and 8.3% at the community colleges. Again, students who currently receive TAP won't have any negative effect of the tuition increase because that increase will be covered. And the enrollment growth that we are projecting in our budget request and that we're planning on is 1%. Again, our enrollment, we're at historic levels currently, and we've been working with our campuses to manage that enrollment. And so, we have a modest number of 1% for fiscal 13. Okay, on page five, I want to talk a little bit about the five-year tuition plan that was enacted by the state this past summer. In this past June, the governor and the legislature agreed on a rational tuition policy for both CUNY and SUNY whereby both systems would be able to increase tuition up to $300 per year through fiscal year 2016. And the board enacted the first year of that increase this past summer when we increased tuition by $300 effective for fall 2011. And as you all know, this was an historic agreement. It not only provides us with financial stability, but also enables our students and their families to plan for the, for what their tuition will be throughout their career here at CUNY, and avoids those large unexpected spikes that we've had in the past at CUNY whereby tuition went up by 25% one year, 32% another year. And what this will also do, all of these funds will be used for enhancing services at the colleges. In the past, when the state would authorize tuition increases for CUNY, the entire revenue from those tuition increases all went to fill budget gaps. None of them went to improve the university or to enhance the students' experience at the university. And so, by having this plan through fiscal 2016, and also, just as importantly, having the state enacting a maintenance of effort provision whereby they cannot reduce the amount of funding to our senior colleges in any one year as we've had in the previous year, will have a level of stability in terms of our state aid. Now, last point on page five, the state legislation also requires that a tuition credit be given to students who are eligible for TAP. And so, the TAP maximum award continues to be $5,000. With this $300 increase that we're proposing for next fall, at the senior colleges, our tuition will now be at $5,430. And so, by state law, we are required to cover the difference, and so that students who are eligible for TAP won't feel any negative effect of the tuition increase. Okay, and it's, page six, just staying with the theme of financial aid. Our request also proposes to set aside $5 million of the additional tuition revenue that will be generated by the increase for financial aid. And we really want to target it to those students who will have their matricul, continuing their matriculation be in jeopardy by the tuition increase. And we're going to do that in a few different ways. We're proposing to use that $5 million for tuition waivers and for scholarships to create a CUNY institutional work-study program modeled after the federal work-study program that we currently have in our campuses, and also to assist students with the cost of textbooks. We had a student financial aid initiative back in 2010 that covered all of these components. It was very successful. We hadn't, we weren't able to continue it last year due to the budget reductions that we had from the state and the city. But with the additional revenue that we're going to be generating next year, we want to resurrect this initiative. Students still will be able to, who are eligible, still be able to receive their Pell Award of $5,550. That's another resource that our students have. And that last bullet point there, I think, provides some really illustrative figures that in fiscal, in our last academic year, 2010, 2011, almost 140,000 of our students received Pell Grants totaling 541 million, and over 100,000 students received TAP awards of $228 million. So, for, just from Pell and TAP alone, not including any other source of aid that students may have received, university students received about $770 million just from Pell and from TAP. Okay, slide seven summarizes our budget for the current year, which is a total of $2.6 billion. And you see our three main funding sources on that chart, state, city, and tuition. And so, in our request for fiscal 13, we're asking for an additional $102 million for mandatory needs, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment, and $91.9 million in programmatic needs, which would bring our total budget for fiscal 13 up to $2.8 billion. Page eight talks a little bit about this investment plan, these programmatic initiatives. What will we be using this money for? You saw on the previous slide that our programmatic initiatives were $91.9 million from the state, city, and tuition sources. Well, we're also going to be generating $18 million from restructuring and efficiencies and from private fundraising. And so, that would bring our total investment program to $109.9 million. And over the last several months, we have done consultations with our Council of Presidents' Fiscal Committee internally here with our Office of Academic Affairs and Office of Student Services. We've met with the Budget Advisory Committee, the Faculty Senate, and also with the University Student Senate to get their collective input as to what should we be investing these additional resources in. And overwhelmingly, the feedback that we got was the most, the number one thing that we should be focusing on is the addition of full-time faculty lines. And so, in the request, as part of this $110 million investment plan, $45.5 million will be set aside for the addition of 440 full-time faculty lines. As you know, we've had an early retirement incentive, and we're down, we lost about 370 full-time faculty lines through that. So, we want to replace those lines and add an additional 440 full-time faculty lines for fiscal 13. In addition, we're also asking for $2 million for our new community college, which is set to open this summer, and also $2.6 million for the expansion of the accelerated study in associates program, the ASAP Initiative, which has been very successful. And that chart there on page eight is a terrific chart. We had this in our request last year, and we thought that it was such a meaningful chart that we want to include it again this year. And you can see from that chart, the, in the red line there shows how many faculty we have added since 2001. In 2001, we were around 5,500 full-time faculty, and now we're above 7,000. So, our campuses have done a terrific job in adding full-time faculty. The problem is, we can't keep up with the historic enrollment levels that we've had. And you can see the blue line there, the graph for the enrollment is growing at a much more rapid rate than the faculty. And so, it's very important for us to bring on these additional faculty lines to try to close that gap. Okay, on page nine, a little bit more about what this $110 million is for. $14.9 million would be for improved student academic support services, including academic advisement, student financial aid, services for students with disabilities, which includes our CUNY Leeds program, which was defunded by the state two years ago, and also for career services for our students. $9.7 million would be used for upgrading facilities and facilities, maintenance and operation, and the upkeep of our facilities. When you go back and look at the last four years' worth of cuts since fiscal year 2009, this is the area that has been reduced the most. And understandably so in the sense that our campuses were trying to protect our core mission of instruction, but our maintenance and operations budgets have taken a big hit over the last four years. So, we want to dedicate about $10 million to that area, and also $10.5 million for enhancements in educational technology. So, on slide 10, you can see the summary of our request broken out by those areas that I just covered, and also broken out by the senior colleges and the community colleges, and as well as the mandatory cost increases of $102 million. Total budget request would be $212 million. Okay, now, on slide 11, I want us to just spend a minute or two on the mandatory cost increases because, again, this is $102 million. And the largest component of our mandatory cost increases, as it is every year, is fringe benefits. Fringe benefits, for this year, we're requesting almost $73.5 million. Fringe benefits has been growing by a rate of about 10% to 11% per year over the last several years, and so this year is no different. Included in this fringe benefit request is also to cover the cost of adjunct health insurance. That's included in our fringe benefits request. Energy costs are in there as well, as well as building rentals. New buildings needs, whenever we have, we're successful in securing capital funds to build a new building, we then have to set aside funding and request funding from the state and city for the operational costs of those buildings. And so, this year, our senior colleges, we're opening a new science building at Lehman College, and the School of Professional Studies is also finally getting their own space this year for, just for the School of Professional Studies. So, that's, the operating costs for those two buildings are included in the $1.9 million for the senior colleges. For the community colleges, again, we have two really exciting new buildings coming up. BMCC Fitterman Hall will be opening in fiscal year 13 to replace the building that was lost on 9/11. And at Bronx, the North Instructional Building will be opening as well, and that covers the $7.3 million. Last item for mandatory needs, salary increments. This represents contractual salary increments that our faculty and staff receive, as well as OTPS inflation. So, it's a total of $15 million. So, slide 12 summarizes all of the funding sources of this $212 million. And so, the mandatory needs, we're asking that to be picked up by the state and city. The programmatic initiatives, we're asking the state to pick up $11 million for the senior colleges. And this covers the additional 10% that we are legislatively due to receive from the fall 2009 tuition increase. When tuition was increased in fall 2009, at that time, we were able to keep 20% of that tuition revenue for programmatic initiatives with an additional 10% per year until we got up to 50% of the total revenue in fiscal year 13. And so, what we're asking for the state is for that last 10%, which is $11 million. On the city side, that $4.6 million for programmatic initiatives covers the expansion of the ASAP program and also the, the additional funding for the new community college. The community college state base aid increase, this $15.6 million covers two pieces of that base aid. It covers a $100 increase to the base aid amount, as well as the enrollment growth that we've had at our community college overall, over the past year. As I stated earlier, the community college base aid has taken a big reduction over the last four years. In fiscal year 2009, the base aid per full-time equivalent student was $2,675 per FTE. For this current year, it's $2,122 per FTE. So, we've taken a 20% decrease in community college base aid from the state, and so we're asking for a $100 increase to that amount in our request for fiscal year 13. As I stated earlier, we're asking, we're assuming a 1% enrollment growth in our budget request, which would generate about $11 million. And we're also planning on $8 million in restructuring and efficiency savings within our own internal budget, as well as $10 million in additional private fundraising. And the last two slides really are to bring into context what this request covers and why it's so essential for us, not only to generate these resources, but to invest them in the right areas. And that's because, as I stated earlier, we're at historic enrollment levels. Page 13, you can see our student headcount has continued to grow since, this goes back to fiscal year 2003. But for this fall, we now had 269,000 students, which is the most we've ever had at this university. And that is a 29% increase from fiscal year 2003. And on slide 14, this is the full-time equivalent student number, which is, again, 200, almost 202,000 for this fiscal year, which is a 35% increase from 2003. And so, we need to be able to, again, generate the resources, not only from the state and city, but the internal self-financing resources from the compact to provide the level of students that our students deserve. So, that's our budget request. I'm happy to take any questions on both the presentation or on anything that is in the document that you may have questions or concerns about.
Before we do that, I'd like to put forward a motion to accept this budget request and then go take questions and answers and all of that. Resolve, subject to the availability of resources, City University seeks a total of $2.824 billion for the university. This total includes additional funding of $102.5 million for baseline needs and $91.9 million for programmatic increases. It also includes an increase in tuition of $300 over the current rates for full-time undergraduate students and a proportional increase in graduate doctoral non-resident and per-credit rates for both the senior and community colleges to fund the programmatic needs. I'll move this motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, we'll open up the questions.
Yes.
On slide 11, mandatory needs, I was trying to track the PowerPoint with the enhanced printout.
Sure.
Where in the enhanced printout is there any enhancement of knowledge on fringe benefits?
In the budget request document itself?
Yeah.
Okay, if you go to the, well, on page, on page six of the request itself, of the request document, you see that fringe benefit number of $73.5 million broken out by senior and community. And also, the tables in the back will also provide those numbers, page 25 and page 26.
Is no descriptive material?
No, but we can certainly provide that to you in terms of what the individual costs are, whether it's, whether it's FICO or health insurance, pension costs. We can provide that information for you.
You mentioned it was a 10% increase. That's what's the cause of the question.
Right. It's been growing about 10% to 11% per year for the last several years. And the three biggest components are the ones I mentioned, health insurance costs, pension costs, and also social security costs.
Embedded into this is a pledge that I made and is in this document, embedded into fringe benefits, and that is to deal with the problem of adjunct health insurance for a class of adjuncts that presumably would lose their health benefits unless the welfare fund was secured, and it's not secured at this particular point. And we are in discussions now with the executive to see if we can get that done. But it's embedded into this, and that's where you're going to see that funded in our fringe benefits.
Trustee Balem, sorry, I think you had a question as well.
Just a couple of questions. You noted that in the past, monies that we have received from tuition increases to state have basically reduced what they gave us.
Mm-hmm.
And now that we have the compact, we have some certainty in terms of what our revenues are going to be.
Mm-hmm.
But how can we, with any degree of certainty, know that that practice of the state and/or the city continuing to reduce what they give equal to or greater than, or at least equal to, what we have received? And we just from, and can one legislative body bind another legislative body that we have any degree of certainty that they will indeed fulfill their tops?
Well, you know, one of the most important things that came out of the state higher ed agreement this past summer, you know, that the five-year tuition plan got the most ink in terms of coverage and what people spoke about. But one of the, one of the just as important things that happened in that agreement was the maintenance of effort provision that was put in, which puts into law that the state cannot reduce its amount that's funded to the senior colleges in any one year as they did in the prior year. And so, state aid to the senior colleges cannot go down unless, in the case of a fiscal emergency, if the state declares a fiscal emergency. And so, that's something that we've never had before. We've had it on the city side for our community colleges, but we've never had it on the state side for our senior colleges. So, that gives us the stability that we need so that we can use the tuition revenue for enhancements and for investment.
I'm just reading the second bullet on page two.
Okay.
It says, "As a result of fiscal conditions of the states, CUNY has sustained $300 million in state budget reductions since 2009,"
Right.
"including a $95.1 reduction in FY 2012." That sort of flies in the face of...
Right, well, the maintenance of effort provision was put in for...
That's last year, 2013.
Right, for fiscal year 13. So, they can't reduce our budget to the senior colleges past what we have in fiscal year 12 in the current year. So, that $95 million reduction is for the current year, but whatever we have for this year cannot be less for next year.
And on that same vein, when you say our budget request on page 11, we are requesting that they fulfill these mandatory needs. Is that part and parcel of their best effort or their...
No.
Their home heart? So, that...
This is, this is the one part that was not in the legislation. What is in the legislation is a five-year plan, which is monumental. I mean, there doesn't exist another state university in the United States today that has enacted a plan like this. So, and this has been, as Chairman Schmidt will tell you, this has been a battle that we have waged with Albany from the time that we both came in and in the positions that we're in. So, for us, this is really historic. The second piece of this is that in the past, when tuition was levied, those dollars were swept off the table.
Right.
In the legislation, this, this money stays at the campuses, or stays at the university and stays at the point of origin. That also is a very big deal. The maintenance of effort provision, that is the third leg of this particular program, is also a very big deal because it gives you the security that when you baseline the year before, it's not going to go below that in the, in the following year. The thing that needs to be remembered in this plan, other than what I just mentioned, is that mandatory cost is a good faith effort. It is not written into the legislation, and we just, you know, we'll see. But the, the state is determined to keep those costs whole, but it's not in the legislation. The other thing that I want to emphasize about this plan, which is something that we fought very, very strenuously for, is that a part of the investment is going to be used to help students that are in harm's way. And I think that's the right thing to do. We are giving up investment income, yes, but we are also, at the same time, preventing students from really leaving, or helping to prevent students that have left the university in the past because of tuition increases. And, and the last piece, I would say, is, and then I'll stop, is that in 1998, the university was raising approximately, the numbers are a little unclear because we weren't really keeping good records of fundraising then, but someplace in the order of $40 to $50 million a year, which sounds like a lot of money, but it's really a paltry sum for a university of this size and complexity. We are now on target to be raising probably $2, $2.5, maybe $230 million a year. I mean, that, I don't know of any university this scene a quantum leap for a baseline from which we've started. And a good part of that money, a good part of that money is going to be... And a good part of that money, a good part of that money is going to be used to help students. So we're all working, and that really is the intent of the compact. But now we actually have it done. I mean, we have the state finally making a commitment that they've never made before. We had an incremental move when we worked out getting 10% of the tuition, 20%, 30%, but now we get to keep it all. So I think we are going to have stability, which we have never had at this university since tuition was enacted many years ago.
And that's my point, Mr. Chancellor. I think that the administration is to be commended, but I think our goal and our responsibility is to make sure all of the stakeholders understand what all the partners' responsibilities are in this relationship and that, you know, the more education we can do to make sure that everybody understands what all the stakeholders and partners' responsibilities are and who is engaged in this, the better off we are. So my point is to make sure that everybody understands that and that if the next legislative body and all the rounds that we go around, that all the parties hold everybody's feet to the ground in making sure that what is envisioned here is actually actualized. So that was what my point is.
A good part of the pieces are well in place.
Okay, thank you. And one last piece. What is our, I know it varies from campus. Some campuses are at 101 capacity and 120, but in general, we can't continue to grow revenues based upon enrollment growth. What's our enrollment capacity growth, capacity growth in general? Where do you think, are we getting close to maximum enrollment?
Yeah, I think at the Manhattan campuses especially, they're the ones that are feeling the most stress from enrollment growth. And Executive Vice Chancellor Logue has done a terrific job over the last year and a half in meeting with each individual campus and setting their enrollment targets for each semester. And I think that has gone a long way in helping our campuses and collectively the university manage its enrollment a lot better. But I think the Manhattan campuses are the ones that are feeling the most stress in terms of their enrollment and what their capacity is.
So that's to say there's capacity in the system but not...
Yeah, I think, as you said earlier, every campus is different. There are some campuses that have room that can grow, but, you know, one thing that we want to make sure that each campus is aware of when determining their enrollment growth is not only do they have the physical space, but do they have the capacity from an instructional level? Do they have the faculty? Can they provide the services to the students that the students need? So it's looking at all of those factors, the space, the dollars, and, most importantly, the instructional and student services needs.
And my point there is to make sure that we, people don't assume that we can just enroll our way out of this issue.
That's right.
And it's clear that everyone understands that there are enrollment growth limits to this as well.
We have given the president's very, very direct guidance on just this. Now, we were a little lax in the last two years, in part because we were in a really miserable recession. A lot of people were out of work, and I thought it was a moral imperative to keep the university as open to as many people who wanted to come back to the university to shore up their skills so that they could leave in a much more competitive place in order to get the jobs that they needed. As we get out of the recession, and hopefully we are coming out of it much more slowly than I think any of us would like to see, we're going to get and work very closely and keep the campuses' feet to the fire with respect to that. Because the thing that I worry about, not so much do we have the physical capacity because we could utilize our facilities more efficiently than we do now, although I must say, most of the presidents are using their campuses a good six days of the week and throughout the day. But the question of dilution of the academic experience is bound to happen, especially if you cannot keep up the teaching power with full-time faculty as enrollment is increasing. And you don't have the same level of due diligence in terms of how faculty are doing when you're hiring as many part-time faculty. So that's something that we really need to be deeply concerned about.
Thank you.
Professor Martel?
A series of questions. First of all, in these difficult financial times, the fact that we can include some money in the benefits part of the budget to cover adjunct health insurances to the credit of the management team here, because I think that's, when we speak of moral imperatives, that's certainly up there. I chair the PSC CUNY Welfare Fund Audit Committee, and I can tell you the money is desperately needed. So that's the right thing to do. With regard to the tuition increase and assuming TAP will not increase, when you put aside $5 million, you're making some assumptions about the percentage of the 100,000, 118 students that qualify for TAP that would be at the TAP max. Have you run the projections to see where, what our net is going to be?
That $5 million is over and above whatever we would have to cover on TAP.
Over and above, I see.
Right.
Specifically for textbooks and things.
I see. Well, then, for every dollar over in tuition that goes up, what portion of it is going to have to go to cover the people who qualify for full TAP?
At the senior college, this doesn't affect the community colleges because the community college's tuition is still well below $5,000. But at the senior colleges, our tuition increase that we're including the press is $41 million. The revenue actually generates about $51 million. So about $10 million would have to be set aside to cover that gap between 5,000 and the new rate we're going to be at, 5,430.
And I assume that percentage would then stay constant as the tuition goes up unless the TAP increases.
Correct, correct.
And with regard to that, when we do the revenue targets, is that going to be on the tuition increase or the tuition increase net of the TAP payment?
Net of the TAP. And that's the way we handled it this year as well.
You, I mean, you knew that was going to be a question, right? Now, with regard to the issue of the compact and the restructuring of the $10 million, the $10 million restructuring, we're all on record of being extremely supportive of the compact and the shared contributions each stakeholder should make. But I do wonder, in a series of years where we suffered budget reductions, budget reductions often amount to de facto restructurings. You add the budget reductions on top of the sum now of all the restructurings we've taken, that 300 million goes north of 400 million. And I wonder at what stage of the process does it become difficult to actually achieve those kinds of restructurings?
No, it's a fair question, and our campuses, since fiscal 2007, when we started the compact, have done a really terrific job about finding efficiencies in their budgets. And you're right, the, having to achieve cuts is a de facto way of achieving efficiencies. However, you know, we're still challenging ourselves and we're challenging our campuses to find other ways of being more efficient. We have a productivity committee that's been meeting for the last several months that has representatives of the campuses on there. And since we've implemented the compact, we have given the campuses flexibility that if they want to, you know, bring down their efficiencies and do more in private fundraising and do more from enrollment growth, that we would have that conversation with them. Now, by saying that, we're not giving the campus, we're not letting the campuses off the hook by saying you can't do any productivity and efficiencies because we always feel that there's ways for them to find productivity and efficiencies. But we do allow them that flexibility to take the different components of their plan and increase or decrease.
Again, the productivity can't be a service reduction. It's really got to be, you keep the services at least at the same level. We've had bigger targets than that. I think it's, you know, it's across the whole university. I think it's a target.
No, I understand. I'm just reminding people that there's two things going on here, the things that we willingly take on and then the things imposed upon us by outside sources. I mean, $300 million is still a significant amount of money.
And the restructuring is not just finding ways to operate the university more efficiently and then free up, well, monetize that exercise and then deploy those resources elsewhere. Restructuring in our way of doing things is looking for ways to generate revenue outside of the normal processes. And Allen and a group of people here in the administration and faculty around the university as well, especially in our areas of technology and science, are very near a point where we're going to see some very real revenue generated from those activities, and that's going to be funneled into the operating budget as well. So it's not just extracting stuff and redeploying it, it's actually finding new sources of work that the university could do and do well and generate the kind of revenue that we will need to fill some gaps.
To give you kind of a simple example, we never licensed the products the university has, t-shirts, hats. We now have affirmed its marketing that will be, to begin with, several hundred thousand dollars to commit, ultimately being a few million. We'll have tens of things that we do that way.
Your textbook initiative that you're doing with IBM, that's a whole slew of activities that are going on.
Thank you.
Mr.?
A couple of points and then a question. I think it is still the case, Matt, even though I have been going on the basis of what's in the record about giving to CUNY rather than your larger estimate, I think it's still the case that no university fundraising has increased as much as a percentage as CUNY has over those years. Now, it's hard to increase your increases while your base is growing rapidly, but we do have an advantage if the maintenance of effort provision is respected. We have the advantage that we're no longer asking people to put water into a leaking cup, and that is a major advantage in talking to donors. My question is, is just, I don't understand how the point works about tuition credit for students eligible for TAP if their tuition exceeds 5,000, page five.
Yep.
So if a student is receiving maximum Pell, does that mean the amount of that student's tuition, if they are eligible for TAP and our tuition exceeds 5,000, does that mean the amount that that student pays is 5,000? Or is it zero?
No, it's zero. If a student has a full TAP award of $5,000, and our tuition currently in the fall semester for a resident senior college student is $5,130, so TAP will cover 5,000 of that 530. The university picks up the remaining $130. In addition, it also works for students who receive part-time awards. If a student receives a partial TAP award of, let's say, $2,500, the university has to pick up 50% of the gap of that 130, so we would have to pick up $65 in that instance. So the TAP award is still at $5,000. The entire $5,000 is picked up for the student. That additional piece above the 5,000 is picked up by the university. So there's no impact on a student who has a full TAP award.
And I don't think, Beno, that there's going to be a reformation in TAP this year, but I think the discussion is going to be very serious starting for next year. But I don't really see changes. I mean, I'd like to be surprised, but I don't really see changes this coming fiscal year, 2012 to 2013, of changes in TAP. And that's unfortunate, but that's going to be very high on our legislative agenda.
May I ask a related question?
Sure.
Do you happen to know, Matthew, what the percentage increase in TAP has been on an annual basis over the last few years?
It's been, it's been zero.
It's been $5,000 for the last several years.
I don't know, four, five years at least.
At least, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Is it true that the federal government is trying to decrease the financial aid?
There is talk about reducing Pell. We started very early and with our congressional caucus to try to turn that around and mobilized a lot of other universities to work with us, and we were successful in the short run to get it secured. I can't tell you with any certainty of whether that's going to be the case on a going-forward basis when the federal government enacts its new budget. We'll see.
It's pretty unlikely in an election year.
That is true. But the federal government is under tremendous stress, obviously, with all of the deficits that are being encountered. So I don't know how this is going to play out.
But, another question from our CUNY, are we taking an initiative to lobby the federal government not to cut financial aid?
Yes, very much so. And we were successful. When I say we, the university communities around the United States were very successful, but it's going to have to be, we're going to have to be vigilant on a going-forward basis.
Clarification, Pell, Pell money cannot be used for the increment between...
Right. The legislation states that Pell cannot be used to fund the increment.
That's what I thought, right.
Any further questions, comments? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Chair, before we leave this topic, I just want to, if I may, just acknowledge our Deputy Budget Director Kathy Abada and all the staff in the university budget office for their terrific work in putting their requests together for this year.
Thank you, thank you all. You're here. You're here. Okay. Next item of business is a resolution to authorize City University of New York to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the Doctorate of Physical Therapy Program at the Graduate Center within City University effective for the spring 2012 semester. We all received via electronically and also on the table here what the current rates are and what the effective rates will be. I have, I'll put forward the motion. Is there a second?
Show move.
Questions? Any? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion. Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize.
One negative vote.
No, sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Item E is a, excuse me, item D is a resolution to authorize City University of New York to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the Doctorate of Nursing Science Program within the Graduate Center of CUNY effective for the spring 2012 semester. As with the prior motion, we received the materials last week, and they're also in front of view at the table, with the current full-time resident rates and the current rates now and what they'll be going forward in the future. I'll move the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Item E is a resolution to authorize City University to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges in the form of a tuition differential for the Doctorate of Audiology Consortium Program, or the AUD, effective for the spring 2012 semester. As with the prior resolutions, the material was sent to us last week showing the current rates and the effective rates for the spring, as well as in front of us. I'll move the motion. Any second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. Item F is a resolution to authorize the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to implement a ration... New York to implement a rational tuition policy by increasing its tuition $300 annually for five years through fiscal year 2015 through 2016 for full-time undergraduate resident students and a proportional increase in graduate doctoral non-resident and per-credit rates at both the senior colleges and the community colleges. As with all the prior motions, the information was given to us last week, and the detail is in us, in front of us. I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, trustee. From, I'm part of student government, we did a lot of survey, and students, they don't want to pay extra money because in this bad economic situation, everybody is struggling. They don't have, most of the student, they are working class. I'm from La Gory Community College, and most of the students, they're, they're really struggling. They cannot provide, I mean, they cannot, they don't have job, they don't have money, they don't know how to pay their rent. Now, if we increase, if you continue increasing money, tuition fee, that would really tough to continue their study. And from CUNY, we said--
Sorry?
We want to accelerate the graduation rate. I don't know how we can accelerate graduation rate if we increase the tuition fee. Then they have to work more and come to school late, like, they have to drop some semesters, which will delay their graduation rate. So I would leave up to the trustee to reconsider it before we vote on it.
Any comments, any questions? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, is a resolution to authorize the Board of Trustees of the university to approve an amendment to the university's investment policy, which was discussed last week at the investment subcommittee meeting, where we're permitting the Senior Vice Pres, Senior Vice Chancellor of Budget, Finance and Fiscal Policy to delegate authority to the Associate Vice Chancellor for Budget, Finance, as well as the university controller with decisions regarding expenditures and spending within the non-endowment fund. I'll, I chaired that meeting, I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded. All in, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Everyone voted aye. And finally, we have a report from the Chief Investment Officer.
Excuse me, before, was, was there supposed to be a, a report? Is, is the motion that we approved on the Tuition and Financial Aid Schedule, 212 to 215, was that the report that we had to present, that CUNY had to present to Albany, or is that another document?
Now, the, the Board of Trustees by November 30th, it's per the recent state legislation from this past June, has to submit a five-year tuition plan to the State Assembly, State Senate, to the State Budget Director. And so that resolution will be, if passed by the full board on November 28th, will be submitted to, to those, to those--
So this is the plan, that's all?
Correct.
I just wanted--
That is the plan.
Thank you.
Just one clarification, that when, when and if we pass it in the November meeting, do we have to revisit it every year, or is it automatic thereafter?
You have to, we will always bring a budget request to the board, and embedded into that budget request will be a change in tuition. But there won't be necessarily a separate vote, as we're doing tonight, to disaggregate the tuition increase from the, from the budget request.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on now to the, our Chief Investment Advisor.
And I will go immediately to the, the update on the Endowment Council, which, in a nutshell, is that we established an endowment council to support our foundations in terms of meeting of investment and regulatory challenges, particularly in light of the New York Prudent Investment Management Act. And we had our first meeting where we had a comprehensive review of best practices in endowment management that was given by Cambridge Associates. We provided some updates on NIPMFA. The feedback that we're getting is, is very good, and we have another meeting scheduled for November the 16th. If anybody has any questions?
Are, are these legal bills going to be annually incurred by us, or is this a once-in-a-while kind of a, of a thing with the lawyers reviewing under the new--
With NIPMFA?
We, we did, because of the, the act was passed in September 2010, and given its various provisions, we did seek outside counsel on the law in terms of the implementation. A, a large part of that has been completed. And there, there might be some fine-tuning types of questions in terms of implementation going forward, but nothing along the lines of the massive work that was done to basically become in compliance with the law.
I see.
Right.
Was that the scaden?
Yes.
Yes.
That was the one time and minimal there, not an unwarranted--
But, but it's fair to say, with the enhanced responsibilities that the investment committee has taken on, we're going to be looking for outside help from time to time.
We will be looking for outside help and meeting more frequently.
Right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, then I will, since we had a robust discussion on performance a week ago, I will simply hit the, the high points. First, some good news. Since last week, we received an estimated return for October, which was up 8.2% for the pool, basically reversing the, the negative returns that we had reported a week ago, and bringing us on a calendar year-to-date basis up about 1 and 1/2%, and our market value being at 161 million. So what a difference a week can make.
Are you including today in those numbers?
No, but that's Friday.
That would be a week and a day.
Volatility is an interesting thing.
Right. But as you know, the, the theme in, in the markets for some time has been the, the macro-driven environment and massive swings in investment sentiment due to the whole deleveraging process that we're going through, due to uncertainty with regard to central bank action and uncertainty with regard to politics everywhere. So what this has led to is increasing correlations, as, as trustee Martel pointed out last week. And what this does is that certainly companies are, are moving more in unison with the sentiment. Having said that, we don't expect this to last forever, and we feel fortunate in that, you know, we can basically stay the course with our strategic plan because our liabilities are so low and fixed with regard to the pool, basically the, the spending rate. And we can use the situation to, to leverage the pool in terms of gradually rebalancing to target and looking for capable managers who can, who can add value by not only benefiting from the increasing correlations, but also those who are capable of, of seizing the benefits in terms of disparities in valuation on companies and, and, and segments of the market. So while everything seems to be very uncertain and volatile, we feel that we're, we have a pretty good disciplined strategy that we are constantly looking to fine-tuning and
There was a congressional hearing two weeks ago on exchange-traded funds in which the most distinguished witness said that the effect of these is, has been to turn our stock markets into a casino on steroids.
That's true.
True.
That and, and a lot of the program trading, I think is, you know, it's really, the markets have so changed over the years.
Look how the bond market has done in the last couple of decades relative to stocks. I mean, that's without precedent as well.
So with that, if there are any questions?
Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Janet. There being no further business for this meeting, I'll move for an adjournment. Okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Trick or treat.
Yeah, I hope so too. I heard, just heard that, you know.